In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. And if everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Robert Mettler?
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown? Robert Thomas asked to be excused, he's not feeling well. Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Godwin Amalola? And Chairman Orsini?
Here.
So first order of business is minutes from the regular meeting? If I can have a motion for that?
To approve?
January 17th, sorry.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver?
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Resolutions, first one for Board Attorney? Yeah. We did, but do we have to do it again? Actually, Bob has a point.
No, we... This is just memorializing what the Board did at the last meeting.
Oh.
Move to approve the resi...
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver? Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola? And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Sycamore Developers LLC, PLN 1700008. I'll second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile McIver? Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And for the vouchers, for our Planning Board Attorney, the January and February retainers in the amount of $1,666 and 66 cents?
Oh.
Yes, it is.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
You want to just do it all of them?
Can we do by acclamation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Voice vote.
In other words, poll, even though we say the amount of money is...
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile McIver? Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So now, open up to the public for any public comments on anything planning-related that is not the subject of a separate hearing tonight. So if you're here for Asia Abraham, PLN 170001, there'll be a separate opening for that. We never opened it, yeah.
I would move...
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? So hearings, Asia Abraham, are only hearing tonight?
Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. If the Board recalls, we were here on October 4th, 2017, at which time we presented testimony in support of an application for a minor subdivision with certain bulk variances to allow the creation of two lots in the R-40 zone. The current lot in question is a 90,000 square foot lot, which exceeds the area requirements of the zone. The issue we had was lot footage, since the zone requirement is 200 feet, and we had 100 feet. At that hearing, we presented the testimony of Ms. Abraham, who's the owner of the property, who testified that it was her intent to construct a new house on the subdivided lot should the Board grant the subdivision approval, and that we would remove the garage from the existing house to eliminate an encroachment and reduce a side yard situation. We also presented testimony of the engineer, Mr. Fletcher, who reviewed the plan, the subdivision plan, and the staff reports, and we presented planning testimony from Mr. O'Brien. At the end of the meeting, there was some concern expressed by the Board concerning the size of the house, and there were also some questions regarding the trees that would have to be removed in conjunction with this application, and with respect to the crossing of the stream that is along the front of the property. And as a result of those questions, this matter was carried. We submitted revised plans. When we were here the last time, there was not a tree count done in the vicinity of where the new house was going to be constructed. That is part of the new plan. And also, we did submit a plan for a smaller house, which was a concern that the Board If I may, when we were here the last time, the square footage of the footprint of the house that we were proposing was 2,562 square feet. We submitted revised plans. With respect to the revised plans, the footprint of the new house that we are proposing is 1,712 square feet, so we've reduced it, we have reduced the footprint approximately 800 square feet. A couple of the other things that were done by Mr. Fletcher in the plans that were submitted is, there was a concern raised by the staff reports concerning the stream corridor. What we did was relocate the house actually a little bit closer to the stream, but out of the stream corridor. And then we took what was originally in the plan, a seepage pit, which was in the vicinity of the stream corridor, and moved it to the rear of the property. That accomplished two things. One, it took everything out of the stream corridor, it was able to preserve some trees to the rear of the property, and it also was able to move the seepage pit further away from the stream. So those were the things that we accomplished as far as the revised plans that we submitted. If you look at the plans that we submitted, Mr. Fletcher indicated that in order for us to construct a new driveway, we would basically have to take out, and again, he went out there and counted the trees and tried to pick the best location, and there will be a removal of about eight trees in order to build the driveway to the new house. But if you look to the rear of the prop, rear of the house on the new plan, there were a bunch of trees there that would have been removed with the original application that are now also going to be preserved. So that is the gist of what we have done as a result of the concerns that the Board had with respect to this application. Mr. Fletcher unfortunately is not here because he's testifying over in Edison tonight on another continued application. But the other thing that he had indicated to me, that he wanted me to convey to the Board, was, there was a concern regarding the crossing of the stream at the front of the property, and rather than putting a pipe to do a crossing, obviously subject to the approval of the DEP, we would construct a bridge over that stream, which would again help if there was a concern concerning flooding. So that was another thing that Mr. Fletcher suggested and that I wanted to communicate to the Board. So at this juncture, I can sort of answer any of the Board's questions, if they have them, concerning the revised plan. My client is here also to answer questions concerning the revised plan. If there are engineering concerns in specificity, I'm not going to answer them because I started a holiday in last night, so I can't testify as an engineer, but we would have to bring Mr. Fletcher back next month. But I think the plans which were submitted sort of addressed the comments, and they're pretty straightforward.
Do we, Mark, do we have any staff reports on this?
No, well, you did originally.
Yeah, I know, I know.
The original report, no, in response to the revisions, I mean, these, the revised plans and the revised architecuals basically were in response to mostly comments that were coming from the Board and the public. They really weren't necessarily in response to technical comments from TRC, from the Technical Review Committee, so a new staff report was not done.
Okay. And can you represent that, you can address all the previous?
I think Mr. Fletcher did that at the last hearing, and we can address, and I think these plans to some degree have already addressed some of those comments, but we can address all the comments in the reports.
Okay, so, we'll open it up to the Board at this point in time. So here's my take on things. Since there's public here tonight, since it was advertised, and since Peter and his client are here tonight, even though the engineer is not, I agreed to let things go as far as we were comfortable. Like Mr. Lanford alluded to, if we have specific engineering questions, or we're not comfortable with something, we can have them back next month. But I figured I'd see how things go, and go from there. So with that, I'll just open it up to the Board for any questions they have.
Is the square footage of the house?
The...
The new house?
The new house, the footprint is 1,712 feet, and the total living area, two stories, is 3,100. The previous application had a footprint of 2,562 square feet, and it was about 36 and change overall.
Because for Lot 2501, it shows a lot coverage, that would be building coverage, of 2,155. Here's the existing house, it's about 1,800 square feet.
That, the existing house is 1,800 square feet. The square footage of the new house is 1,712. It may be that they have added on the garage, and with the garage is another roughly 400 square feet.
So first and second floor, again, what's the square footage?
The square footage combined is 3,171.
Regarding the drywell, I'm not going to get into the technical specs. You are going to be doing soil borings on the lot to make sure that it's able to handle a drywell. If not, then you'll deal with the ordinance and do the contribution or something, some kind of mitigation on the property or near the property.
That's what we would do, that's correct, Mr. Hauck.
One other question. There are a bunch of trees which you're, on the plans you're showing to keep. How realistic is it to keep a 10-inch diameter tree in that close proximity to the house? I mean, are we going to put some kind of, you know, barrier or fence around it to make sure these trees don't get undermined?
We will have to protect them, we will protect them. Obviously, your ordinance indicates that if we do lose the tree, we would have to either replace it in kind or compensate the municipality. In this instance, there's enough room on the property to replace the tree somewhere else. But it's our intent, like I said, if we look at where we chose to put the driveway, it would involve removing basically eight trees to handle the driveway. And then we looked at, if we went to the other property and connected to the other property, we'd still have to remove trees to come over from the other property and still wind up removing approximately the same number of trees.
I don't want this to turn into an issue that we had with another developer recently, where they just go in and clear cut the whole lot.
That is not the intent. Ms. Abraham testified the last hearing, she intends to live there, she intends to preserve all the trees that we can preserve.
I think the best thing to do would be to, you know, mark the trees you're going to be taking out, put a fence up, have the engineering department inspect that before the developer starts taking them down?
I don't have a problem with that being a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Any other Board questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for your submission. I really like the way you frame making corrections and putting things together. But my concern is with respect to the bridge, you say you want to construct a bridge just to control the stream or the flood that is likely to come from rain or the moving water. Can you tell me the size of the bridge you want to construct within that area?
It's just, well, first of all, the bridge would have to be approved by the township and also by the DEP, but it would be a bridge to handle one car going over it to get to the property.
Okay.
It's just for a crossing. Right now, on the existing house, there is a pipe across that's under, or a pipe in the stream to cross. We felt, rather than put another pipe there, the bridge would be more appropriate because it would help in not causing any flooding.
Yeah, because that was the concern expressed the last time
Right.
with a lot of people that came out to make suggestions. So if you guys can address that and put it in perspective for me to understand?
Right.
I think that would help.
It's basically a, the width of a driveway, a one-car driveway, just across that stream. There, it, I think is, I'm trying to get the measurements, I think it's about 10 feet wide, and it's just so we can cross it. We would have to submit a permit to DEP to do that, and they would have to approve it.
Okay.
And so the bridge design and everything will be submitted for the township?
Township and DEP, and that would be another condition of approval.
And just to clarify, that bridge is just for the driveway?
Yeah.
It's not a road? Just a few questions, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Just to clarify, the driveway for 24.01, which is, serves the existing house, to the extent that it's in that stream corridor, it looks from the plans that that driveway's going to stay as-is, and then to the extent that the driveway changes, it's after it's outside of the stream corridor? It looks like the stream corridor, well, the stream corridor is identified, that's that heavy dash line across the property?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Also, a portion of the driveway serving 24.01, similar to the garage, crosses over the proposed property line? I'm assuming that those are going to be removed prior to filing of the subdivision?
Everything that is an encroachment will be removed prior to filing the subdivision deeds.
Thank you. And lastly, the proposal is to keep the house that's on 24.01, so the variances are for that existing house. What happens if five years from now, that, what is your thought as far as, if that house is torn down five years from now and a new house goes up, are you seeking variances in that situation, or do you, or would you think that you have to come back?
Well, there's two options, Mr. Haley. One is, you can ask us to come back and seek the variances at that time. The other option is to grant the total of two side yard variances, just like you would in this application, so that we would have to build a new house with at least a 25-foot side yard on each side if the house was going to be reconstructed. That would be up to the Board.
So I think those are two reasonable options for the Board, you may want to discuss it. I think the one option, as far as the second option that Mr. Lanford discussed with the variance for the two side yards, the one issue that you're discussing here with 25.01 is the size of the house. So, you know, you may want to think about, if you're going to grant the variance for 24.01, do you want to place limits on how big that house can be, or do you want to just have them come back? Some future date. Right now, their proposal is to keep the house as-is, and if they want to build something else five, 10 years down the road, they have to come back for that particular variance.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't want to lock us in anything like I know about.
I don't have a problem with that.
Can you tell me what the two rows on either side of Arbivida are for? To screen the neighbors?
Those were in the original plan to screen the adjoining house, that is correct.
Change those to like, I don't know, spruce or something?
We...
It's deer food.
We can, we can change the species.
Deer food. You'll have very, like, icicles of stalactites left by the time they're done.
That's fine, we can change the species.
Any other questions for the Board? If not, open, all can open to the public? All right, so I'll make a motion open to the public on this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's open. Just come up and please state your name and address, and then be sworn in by our attorney.
Actually, if I can swear you in first.
Or that.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
My name is Tara Young, 207 Wilson Road. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My husband, Tom, and I are directly next door from 199 Wilson Road. He's disappointed he can't be here this evening because of business, so I'm going to the speech for the two of us. Some of the things I've heard here tonight, I'm very pleased with. It's going to cause me to revise my little speech for this evening, which is not a bad But moving forward, my first concern about the house size, and I was happy to see that the footing of the house has been lowered, but I still do have a concern about the 3,500 square foot, which does include the garage, because it is, it is still big for the neighborhood, although I'm glad that it's been visited and the square footage has been reduced. My second concern is the four-foot variance being requested for structure distance between proposed Lot 24 and 25. If that is accepted, it sets a serious precedence for building in this town, which can be very scary. My third concern is the tree removal. I found the plans a little confusing, because in one part of the plan says it's 11 trees being removed. When you look at the ratio area of the plans, 17 are X-ed off to be removed. Now we're being told there are, eight of them are going to be removed in a driveway area, which I also counted, that is, seems to be the case. But there seems to be discrepancies, which I find very confusing. 17 trees marked with an X, eight trees in the driveway, that obviously look clear, 11 trees where the ratio is, on the formula, the township formula, that's right in the middle of the plan. Also, I happen to be home in December, the day that the surveyors came to mark well over 50 trees with pink dots. Now, I'm not an expert, this whole experience has been a learning experience for me, but I don't know what that means. There's well over 50 trees marked with pink dots, not including small girth trees, and it, to me, it looks like it's a clear-cut situation. I could be wrong, but maybe somebody can clarify that for me with more expertise. So just how many trees are actually slated, and it still seems so vague. It still seems so vague.
Do you want me to try to respond to that right now, before you go on to your other points?
Yes, I would appreciate that.
And again, I'm trying to read the plan like you are. There are basically, as I indicated, eight trees that need to be removed for the driveway, and again, in counting them, it looks like there are one, two, three, four, five, six more trees in the area of where the house is going to be that are going to be removed. So it looks like the total number is 14.
But there are 17 Xed.
On the plan?
That is correct.
Well, my eyes aren't the greatest.
Well, you know, the concern of mine is because, with all due respect, the information that's being presented is very vague. I think it might, we're going to, and, you know, but all I'm looking at is the plans.
I am, I'm only counting 14 that are Xed. If there's 17...
There's 17, I have them highlighted.
I'm sorry, then I apologize. Then those are the trees that are being removed.
Well, there's a reason why, that is a big deal, which I will be coming to shortly. And Mr. Hauck, I do appreciate the comment that you made earlier about something more comparable to the trees that are going to be removed, be placed there that are not deer-loving plants such as Arbividae, because on the plans, there are, I believe, 16 trees being replaced based on the formula of removal, four of them being actual trees, two which are cherry, two are maple. They're going to be placed in the back of the property. There are six Arbividae, according to the plans, that were slated to be placed between my property and proposed Lot 25, as well as six Arbividae to be placed between Lot 24 and Lot 23. Well, again, I, something more comparable would be wonderful, because this is what Arbividae in our, in our town looks like.
Yeah.
When it's eaten by deer. It looks like little, like little coneheads.
That's exactly why I asked for them to put in, put in the spruce instead.
Yeah, and I very much appreciate that.
We have that.
But I also have a concern, and this is just a personal thing, again, a learning experience, because I've, I've become to understand that just because a tree is removed, it doesn't mean it has to be replaced on an individual person's property. It has to be replaced, but it can be replaced somewhere else in town, let's say a park or somewhere else where a tree may be needed, which, which I think is wonderful in one respect, but it takes away from a neighborhood in another. So that's just a personal footnote.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's normally, the intent of, my client intends to replace all the trees on-site. There are instances I've had other...
On, onto the site itself.
Onto the property itself. Yeah, there are instances where, when you're developing a site, you may not have enough room to put all the trees, and then you put them somewhere else. But the township ordinance intends that they be replaced on-site, and that's what we intend to do.
Well, according to the formula, it really doesn't have to be replaced on-site.
But they're going to be.
It's more of a courtesy.
It's our intent to replace them.
It's actually, it's up to the Board.
Yeah.
The Board makes that determination. The ordinance says, has a preference, and the ordinance says that it, number one, if it can be replaced on-site, it should be.
Wonderful.
Number two, if it can't, Mr. Lanford said, sometimes we may get a site that's a warehouse, and it takes up the whole property, and you can't put a tree in the middle of a parking lot or on top of it, so you put them somewhere else.
Realistically.
Or the third preference is, the township can receive payment in lieu. I would suspect that in this situation where there is room, and there are concerned neighbors, and there is environmental sensitivity here, that the Board will most likely require that they put it on-site.
That's very nice to hear, thank you. My biggest concern, this is just a segue to my biggest concern, which is flooding on Wilson Road. During a steady rain, the stream often overflows. With an additional drive, we were going to have an additional driveway pipe put in, which I had a big concern about because of the overflow going through the pipe. Now that's, seems to not be the case. A bridge, I have to agree, is a sigh of relief. It will help keep the flooding a little less of a concern. But the removal of the trees, possible clear cutting, whether it's 17 trees, eight trees, or whatever, it definitely creates more water, more erosion of the soil, as well as less absorption of the water, and creates even more severe flooding. There are 11 houses on our street that have the stream in front of them, so those houses primarily get the first part of flooding. But the flooding can go completely across the street to the other side. Even the engineer who drew up the proposed plans acknowledges right on the plans that it is a flood hazard zone. So I'd like to present to you, if you wouldn't mind, just for a moment, some pictures I took. We just recently had a steady rain, and this is 199 Wilson, for, if you don't know what the area looks like, it just looks... Uh, for, if you don't know what the, the area looks like, it just looks like woods. Okay, and the stream is right in front of it. I'll be happy to pass that around if, if, if you'd like. This is what happens after steady rain. Again, this is the overflow of the stream in front of one ninety-nine Wilson, which is right next to me. Okay, this is not the stream that you're looking at. This is overflow. The stream is all the way back here and you could see the property is all flooded. This is, um, the overflow facing Amwell Road, looking up toward Amwell Road, the southwest part of, um, of, uh, one ninety-nine Wilson. This is the stream. This is the grass. This is the street. That little post there, that's my, my little two oh seven Wilson Road on my driveway. And this picture faces the opposite direction toward Martino Drive. So you can see just how bad it gets. Just a steady rain. This isn't a crazy rain or anything like that. This was just a few weeks ago. The stream is literally here, this little tiny spot. And this is the grass and this is the street right here. This last picture I'd like to present is the top of my driveway. Um, I'm standing on top of my driveway and the water of the stream is butting up against the top of my driveway. So it is a very, very serious concern on Wilson Road. And that's why I'm so passionate about trying to keep as many trees as possible in the area to prevent erosion um, and to help with more water absorption.
If I could step in for one second?
Absolutely.
Um, those photos that you have that you've.
Yes, I did. You're welcome to, okay, sure. Uh, about two or three weeks ago. Absolutely.
Is your mic on?
Sorry, I'll start over. I'm not used to this. Just, uh, again, you took those photos, correct?
I took those photos, correct.
And you took them when?
Myself and my husband. Uh, about two or three weeks ago.
And they accurately represent the condition of the property at the time the photos were taken?
Correct.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Lanford, regarding those photos?
Absolutely.
We're going to mark them in.
Yeah, we're going to mark them. If you could put them in the order that you, you referenced them.
Sure. You want the Arbor Vidae also? I'm not trying to be funny. That's just part of the. Okay.
That's, they're in the correct order?
Correct.
Okay, if you want to slide them up here so I can mark them. Thanks so much. Chairman, for the record, I'm marking these P one through P five. I'm going to show them to Mr. Lanford now. Have any questions or objections to the board consider?
And rest assured, that's not a snowmelt. It is true rain.
And just one other thing, Ms. Young, the, uh, I guess the stickies that, the post-it notes that have the designation and some information on them, they were placed there by you as well?
That is correct.
Continue.
Please note that I cannot fault the property owners for wanting to build, um, their large house, live in it, sell in it, whatever they choose to do. Um, I just fail to see how the removal of the trees in particular is not going to be a detriment to the public good of the neighborhood. By changing the beautiful nature, natural landscape and creating additional erosion and flooding that will impact a large portion of the neighborhood. Please consider this during the review of the plans. I have the utmost confidence that you will all make the best choices for minimal impact to our neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
If you could raise your right hand for me? You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is.
If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, please.
Brian Ulrich, U L R I C H, two oh nine Wilson Road. Uh, my wife Gina couldn't be here tonight. But I'm here to talk about this project as, as well. I have several concerns. One being the flooding in the area, two being the, uh, four-foot or approximate four-foot side yard on the existing structure that's going to be remaining. And, uh, and the trees that are going to be removed. The first thing I want to, is that side yard. That side yard, I mean, you're creating this situation where you're setting a precedent for the neighborhood. And I, you know, you have side yards for a reason. I mean, to keep the neighborhoods kind of similar, keep everything like in order. And, and four-foot, I mean, that's almost not indoor ADA compliant. Like, forget about outdoor. I mean, this is almost, almost out of compliance for indoor. I mean, we're talking four feet on the side of the house. These, the trees that are going to be taken down. Now, I see all the trees that are marked, that are going to come out of this, out of this property where the house is and where the driveway is. But, I mean, if you look right behind the structure, these are all eight, seven, ten, ten-inch, fourteen-inch, eight-inch trees. I mean, within a couple of feet of the back of the house, I'm seeing sudden dangerous situations where emergency tree removal is going to have to be performed. And, uh, it was an emergency. It was up against the house or it's close to the house. It could fall on the house. And those trees are going to be gone. For sure. They're going. Just not during the construction. But afterwards, they're gone. Promise. Bank on it. The, the last thing I wanted to bring up was the flooding as well. Her pictures don't really show it, you know, that bad because it was just a couple of weeks ago and we really only had a couple of weeks to prepare for pictures. But I took pictures when I moved in and it was a little bit of a heavier rain. And in this picture, which is standing on two eleven Wilson Road, facing Amwell Road, looking, two eleven, looking over my property, two oh nine, you know, the street is gone. And that's a four-foot wide stream. I mean, I could jump over it and not get wet. I mean, it's a four-foot wide stream, covers the whole road. I took this pic, I took all these pictures. These pictures were taken in mid-two thousand thirteen or mid-two thousand fourteen. I'm not sure which years. All the years kind of run together. But it was one of those, one of those years. Yes. That's looking down past Towers because I'm right next door to Tower. I'm two oh nine, she's two oh seven. That's looking down, down towards Towers, towards, and then the next property, one ninety-nine. This is the same, same thing again. You can see the road is gone. This is standing at the end of my driveway, looking up towards Treptow. Looking over two oh nine and towards two eleven. Again, road is gone.
You have a pen on you?
A pen?
Mark the back of the ones you started.
I, I scribbled on the pictures, like, two eleven, I've kind of wrote on the property.
Mark you with, with the. Start with the first one and make that.
P six? Okay. P six? P seven?
Back of, how to respond to the description that you're making?
This, uh, P eight? P eight is standing at the end of my driveway, looking towards Treptow and Miss, uh, Treptow and, uh, Martino, looking down. Again, that's a four-foot wide stream. That's a four-foot wide stream and the road, the asphalt is gone. Just the center line is showing. But this was, it had stopped raining already and I was out taking pictures. Here's, uh, some lucky fellow who thought he could drive through it and tow truck is there.
You could make that P nine on the back?
P nine.
Super.
Here is, uh, again, standing at the end of my driveway. This is a different storm, a different rainstorm. That's the same, that's the same rainstorm. I'm sorry. This is, uh, there's two different storms in these, amongst these two pictures, so they're both at different times. This one is the same one showing the, while it was raining, I was out there and the water was higher. You could see the yellow line is clearly gone in the middle of the road. And, uh, there's the guy sitting there stuck. That was P ten.
That's P ten, perfect.
You know, and this all leads to, you know, taking these trees out, these trees suck up water. Roofs move water off and all this water is going to end up in the street. I have three pumps in my basement to keep the water out and one big giant gas trash pump. If any of those water pumps fail, that I have to get in there and pump my basement out because it'll fill, fill right up. You know, behind our property is the, the town property, um, between like Wilson and Gogan or there's that town, I think that's, that's wetlands and that overflows. And when that overflows, when it rains hard, the water comes streaming down the properties, over all the trees that they're going to cut out and comes streaming down all from the back. Here's the back of the property, the town preserve in the back. And it comes running down the properties. This is standing on my property line. Two oh nine is on the right. There's the property line and this is two eleven Wilson, looking up his, up his, uh, yard. If I had known I was going to be presenting these to the board, I would have taken more pictures of time, but I just happened to catch like, oh, look at all the flooding. So this was what, P eleven?
Eleven.
This is standing in the same position except for turned around now, looking towards Wilson Road, watching the water roll down from the wetlands in the back, rolling down to the street, making to the blood. P twelve. This is standing at two oh, two oh seven.
All right, and can I just interrupt you? So at this point, I think the board has a pretty good idea of what things look like. I, I mean, is there, you can go to fifty photos, but is it really going to do anything?
I understand. So that gets to, like, taking these trees out is going to add to the water and the water is obviously an issue. So I think that's, I think that's about it. My, I got the pumps in my basement. It's just, we're going to add more to it. And, you know, the four-foot setback? You know, what happens like three months from now when, if I wanted to put a garage up and add my garage? I mean, there's a precedent now in the neighborhood for anybody.
If I could address that, because I just, the residents have raised, in my opinion, a number of significant issues. In my opinion, the issue of this setting a precedent is, is not one of those significant issues. This does not set a precedent for, number one, it's, it's, it's reflecting the setback of the existing house. Setback is internal to the development, so in a way that's internal to the applicant themselves. They're not proposing to, you know, a new house and place a setback out to their neighbor of only four feet. That wouldn't even be before this board. I mean, you know, that would, staff would say, don't even bother, something like that. You know, this is, you know, to reflect the existing house, um, again, internal to the site itself. Um, it's, you know, the, the, I know usually, you know, applicants' attorneys will say, you know, variances don't set precedence for others. But I think in this situation, if there's facts here that addressing this particular variance that don't apply. If you want to put a variant, a, a garage on your house and only have a setback of four feet, that, those situations, those circumstances are vastly different than this situation in terms of this particular.
Ten years from now, when neither of these people are in either of the properties, they're going to say, what is the neighborhood like? I say, there's a house that's got a four-foot, is that a four-foot setback?
And, and the board could, if the board at the end of the day decided they didn't want to grant that, the applicant could, um, revise their proposed lot line and kind of have it go diagonally around. The house is still going to be exactly where the house is. Um, so I, you know, in the piece, properties, internal property lines are invisible. I don't think that this four-foot setback is going to cause anywhere close to the precedent that, 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 you know, your and your neighbor think it will. Now, all of the other issues, in my opinion, you know, the board may want to discuss. And obviously, if the board is concerned about the four-foot precedent or the four-foot variance, you, you know, obviously feel free to discuss it. But I just don't want to get the, have the board go down and discuss too much, something that I don't think is.
And again, the, the trees, there's going to be a lot of emergency tree removal here. Emergency, dangerous tree removal, five feet, ten, within ten feet of the back of the house, you can see there's a forest of large trees. They're going to be removed. That's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
You indicated, uh, you had three sump pumps in your house?
I have three sump pumps.
And, and where does the water discharge to?
My front lawn.
Okay, and the front lawn goes down out to Wilson Road, correct?
Out to Wilson Road.
Okay. And does your property have a drywall or anything to hold that water once it discharges from your basement?
I do not know.
You, you don't know whether you have a drywall or not?
I don't have to do anything. I bought the house. The guy died, so I pretty much got no instructions with it.
Okay, tha- thank you. I have no further.
And the pumps go into a pipe and?
Thank you. I have no further questions.
You want these pictures?
At least the ones you marked. You can give them to Peter first. Give him, give him to Peter first and then, uh, Lanford and then, um, Peter, if you have any objection to them. Any other public comments on this application? All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries? So, so, uh, you, you, you look like you want to say something.
No, go ahead. I'll let you go first.
Oh, no, so I was just gonna, I was just, I was just going to respond to, to, to some of this. So, uh, in, in essence, I agree with, with what Mark said. Um, I, I, the biggest thing for me is that we don't lock ourselves into anything in the future. And as Peter said, there's sort of like two options. We grant this variance and, you know, the existing house comes down or, you know, they, they want to build a bigger house in the future, they would have to come back. And I think that's very important. Um, in terms of if they were building these two houses side by side with that four-foot side yard, I, I would have a problem with that. Um, but in essence, um, it's not going to look like a four-foot side yard. So that is, that is, um, you know, we have to take into account what sort of the practical, uh, situation is. Um, trees. I think Mr. Ulrich has a point when it comes to the trees that are closest to the house. I have a hard time believing that you can preserve some of those trees as close to the house as they are. Um, if you can, that's great, but I mean, I, 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 I might want you to address that. I, I would rather have you take them out now, be honest, and then, you know, plant more, uh, in the right place than take them out later and, you know, we can't do anything about it because the approval's been granted. Um, flooding. I have a hard time believing, given those pictures, it actually kind of, um, i- in some ways almost undermines the argument how one house would contribute to much more than that. You know, that, that is a problem area, no doubt about it. Um, there's a stream and, and maybe in today's day and age, we'd have preserved that property before it was built on or we would have zoned it differently or I don't know what we would have done. But it is, is many, many years after that. Um, the good thing is this, the, the new house will have, uh, drywells in which the runoff from the house will go into and not discharge directly into the stream. So that mitigates a great deal. Uh, other than that, yes, you'll have a small increase in impervious coverage in which the house lies, but again, that water is going into the drywall. Um, trees, I mean, I, I do have, like I said, some issue with that. Um, Seal had a, I think, a, a reasonable idea, which is maybe the species could somewhat be altered, um, to, you know, maybe willows or something that, you know.
Water-loving shrubs and trees along the front.
I mean, the thing is, we can't, we can't ask you to plant more trees or more replacement trees than the ordinance, um, says you have to. And, and nor, nor will I do that. But I would just ask you to consider whether the trees that are that close to the house are really practical to preserve when you dig a foundation.
And I, I think the answer is that we would like to try to preserve them. I think that's in everybody's best interest, but I think a condition is, uh, that you can put is that before the CO is issued, that we do a new tree count. And if other trees did have to come out, obviously. And if other trees did have to come out, obviously we would have to replace them in kind, uh, if we had to remove additional trees. I, I.
I like that idea.
Yeah, be- because again, we would prefer to try to preserve them. I think the neighbors would prefer that we try to preserve them. If for some reason we can't, uh, prior to the issuance of the CO, we'll go out there and do a tree count, we'll submit it. And if more than the seventeen trees come out, we would have to replace those additional trees. Our goal is not to try to take them out or, uh, you know, say to you, I wanna take out five more at this time if they can be preserved.
I like that idea.
And that's in addition to the suggestion Mr. Hauck made, which is that, um, each of the trees will be tagged, there'll be a limit of disturbance placed in the field and that'll have to be inspected before they even start construction.
I like that idea.
And then if additional after that, then Mr. Lanford's suggestion comes in.
But could the trees be water-loving?
I think they'll plant any species you want.
Yeah, we, we have no problem planting trees that, that are, are more tolerant to water.
Reasonable?
Well, one thought I have, you know, given the comments of the lady from two oh seven would be to plant trees along that border to her lot so that there's more screening between the houses. Myself, I would like to have the, the lot line towards the rear revised to give greater, uh, a greater, greater side yard for the existing house and possibly even to allow retention of the garage. I think you could do that without, uh, the new lot going below forty thousand square feet. Uh, but I know that planning abhors, uh, lots that wander, lines that wander around. Rather give straight lines and variances, but it would be somewhat of a provision against, uh, future house on the site of the existing house encroaching further. I think definitely, I don't know whether we can say that the four feet variance is granted for the existing house only and any new house would have to come back for a variance if, uh, on the site. But certainly a new house would have, be able to be located further away from the lot line. I think is the concern of the neighbors, but, uh, in actual practice, it probably back that far from the street, it probably doesn't make a great deal of difference. I think that the, while I wouldn't want a house of the design shown, I think it's a reasonable compromise, a cutting down of the size. And also it's, the layout is narrower and it's more by extending further back so that it doesn't look quite so large as the originally proposed house. I'd rather see something that, you know, had well-defined first and second stories instead of these monster windows on the front of the house. But this is getting into fine detail and personal preferences.
I- i- if, if I may, Dr. Chase, I think the plan that we submitted and if the board thinks that that, the size of that house and the look of that house is appropriate, I have no problem indicating that that would be the house that we would build so that there is no misunderstanding, misunderstanding that, you know, you're gonna see something that looks different than what we are proposing. Uh, I think, you know, I appreciate the comments of the neighbors. We did try to be sensitive to that, so I think if the board wants to reference the plan that we submitted in the resolution and say that's the house we're gonna build and that's what you're gonna get, I, I think that that's a, a reasonable condition.
Well, I think the condition is that the footprint of the house be the same square footage as you have presented tonight. Uh, that it not be any larger than that. And within that, yeah, you might, uh, produce something somewhat different.
Okay. Any other board comments?
I think, uh, Dr. Chase did address my concern.
Your mic on?
Oh, I thought it was. Green light seemed on, but okay.
Now it's greener.
It's greener, yeah, brighter, brighter lights. Uh, Ms. Chairman, I think you're right in terms of the question of flooding. Sadly, uh, Wilson Road is one of the older roads in the township. And a lot of it was developed not as a unified, uh, development, but, uh, as people built individual houses. Uh, and it was done, some of it was done before zoning existed, which didn't exist until nineteen fifty-eight. And I can remember being on Wilson Road, talking to a gentleman who lived closer to Amwell from where you are, and he was just furious. He was going to shoot his neighbor across the street because the neighbor had actually moved the stream, which was not an illegal thing to do at that time. And so, uh, had, had put it a little closer to him and these two people were just, they were not talking to each other and it's very fortunately, they did not shoot each other, but, but the, the rhetoric would, would have suggested that they were uh, likely to do that. So then the question becomes can, can we solve the problem? And we can't really solve the problem. But we can try and ensure, as the chairman mentioned, that we don't make the problem worse. And between the drywall and the bridge, which I was also very happy to see, I think the applicant is doing what they can do to, to not make the problem worse. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. There are no other comments for the board? I'll give you a summation before we.
Yeah, I, I, I think you've really hit all of the major points. Uh, I, we, we did after the last meeting take to heart the concerns of the board, the concerns of the neighbor. We did start with the house itself and tried to address that and, and we did uh, do some serious looking as to where the appropriate location of the crossing is, the appropriate location of the house. And as Mr. Rossini indicated, we do have to put a drywall in which none of the houses in that area do. None of the houses there, I don't believe have drywalls cause they're all older houses. There is now a requirement for all the new houses to have drywalls, which again will help with respect to the flooding issue. We will work to make sure that we have, uh, trees that we replace, that will be, uh, able to absorb water, so that will solve that problem. And we have no problem putting trees along the property line of our adjoining neighbors. So I hope with all of those things, uh, you know, we, we've addressed the issues. We've, you know, it took us almost four months to get back and there was a reason it took us four months to get back because we tried to get it as right as we can get it. So I thank you for your time and your input.
So with that, um, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion. I, I might be able to, uh, notes?
You could pry.
Make a motion with all the.
Yeah, maybe I can.
I might be able to decipher them better, if you want me to help you with, with, with what I've, what I've cobbled together. Um, the, the conditions that I, I've cobbled together from, uh, what's been, uh, presented to the board this evening are that tree replacement will occur on site, uh, that the setback variance that's being provided is only for the existing dwelling. If it's ever removed, the applicant will need to come back to this board prior to constructing an additional, uh, dwelling on the site or, or actually the zoning board. Um, that there will be a, a tree count done prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. And at that time, any additional trees that needed to be removed will be replaced in kind on the property. Uh, that there will be a tree procedure as outlined by Mr. Hauck, uh, prior to any trees being removed. That includes the tagging, um, the protection and inspection of the trees that are going to remain, uh, by the township. Uh, tree species to be replaced are to the satisfaction of the board professionals, uh, and with trees being, uh, installed on the property line between uh, the applicant and their adjoining property owner. And I think that is everything.
And that there would be a bridge rather than a pipe crossing the stream?
On the plans now, right?
Uh.
I thought that was on the plan, so that's.
That should be a condition.
Then, then absolutely.
I thought it was in the plans too.
Nope, thank you.
But that, but that also the township will have a, uh, review of that.
That, that also has to go to the.
That's, that's, that's a given, okay.
What I got?
Okay, then I move the application with that, those conditions.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase? Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Howe?
Yes.
Cecil McIver?
Yes.
Robert Metler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin, huh? Godwin Omolola?
Yes.
Chairman Rossini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, so it looks like we have one other item in our work session, new business, which is Hamilton ordinance. Probably this is a continuation of the last discussion, yes. And that explains why you're racing with your president? Just can't stay away.
The chairman, as you know, has been bothering me for the last year because I only came to this board about once. So given that I was here a month ago, he told me I needed to come back again. Uh, if you remember when we were here about a month ago, we were talking about the, uh, the economic development report that our consultant did. And we talked about, uh, recommendations to the CEB M one zone and that we're gonna do a master plan amendment and the board unanimously agreed to that. I mentioned at that time, the, the report that many of you saw and Mike was at and of course Ted is on the committee. Uh, it talked about how we wanted to make some additional possible changes to Hamilton Street. Uh, our consultant talked about possibly breaking Hamilton into three separate distinct districts. Uh, what I'm here to talk to, about tonight is the area from Key Avenue, which is from here down to the end to St. Peters and Paul's, approximately the last twenty-five, thirty percent of the street. Our consultant recommended that we allow developers to go up to an additional story, five stories, and not mandate that they put commercial entities, in other words, allow them to have, uh, the full five stories of residential. But conditioned upon that being either, you know, one bedrooms or studio bedrooms or conditioned upon them being for, uh, students, particularly Rutgers students. So what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the idea of having it from Key Avenue to the end. Uh, and what our consultant looked at is the economics of that third of the street. First of all, it's the closest to New Brunswick, so it's the most likely that we're gonna get the student housing. Number two, if you, if you notice, most of those properties are rather small in, in depth and in length, which means that a developer needs to, to get to the forty thousand square feet, which is the minimum we require right now to do four and the minimum required to do five. It requires them to assemble a multitude of properties. In his two hundred page analysis, he determined to do that to get to the point where you can actually make it affordable, to give that incentive. You needed to go probably another story and because we wanted to encourage the, the development of the commercial on the other two thirds of the street. And because the current developments that we have on the street are having, especially the three or four in that, are having a rather difficult time renting their commercial spaces right now because there's kind of an oversaturation of the commercial and with everything that's happening online. He recommended that. So what I'm here tonight is to, to make that recommendation. The, the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, uh, met several weeks ago. And we gave, I gave them the same presentation and they unanimously agreed that they would recommend that we do that and that we would prepare an ordinance and a master plan amendment for the, uh, the board's consideration to, once again, to allow in that last third from Key to the end, go up one additional story to not mandate, now if they wanted to put commercial office on the first floor, they could, to not mandate. But most importantly, conditioned upon them being, and you know, we would write that up for the board's consideration, that they would have to be either student housing or the one bedroom of the student, the students, so that we would not get the associated, you know, children that, you know, we wanna have people walking on the street. So what I'm here to do is to ask you if, if you're all okay for us, for staff to prepare an ordinance and a master plan amendment. And we would do it at the same time. We do the CB and the M one. We would show it to you beforehand, just like we would do. We'd have any discussion if you wanted us to change it and if we're okay, then we would, in the next month or two, go ahead with those, those two at the same time.
These students are gonna be going back and forth to their classes during the day. Coming home for lunch, whatever. What are we gonna do for, how are you gonna have parking? This area, as it develops more and more, is gonna need parking. And all those students are gonna wanna drive their cars.
And we, we currently require all of the residential to be on site. In essence, this would make, if there would be a parking problem, actually less because most of them would not have the commercial and they don't have to provide the commercial on site. All of the residential parking, just like the five development, is provided on site. They have to have that on site. When we allow them, which the current zoning tells them they have to have commercial, they can opt out. They can buy.
So each room will, will have a parking spot?
Will have whatever, whatever the RISs standard is, yeah.
Will have a parking spot.
Or, or if, if you or the zoning board makes a determination that based on a, you know, a different amount. But the ordinance requires that you, residential site plan improvement standards need to be filed. Now, just like any other time, you're, you're, you can grant whatever variance, but they, they have to provide those on site.
So you're not zoning commercial out, but you're saying it's okay to build without it?
Correct, correct. They, they have the option to do it if they, if, if they want to.
When you say one additional story, what is that going from three to four or four to five?
Four to, four to five. But that's four to five with the same condition before, is they need to have the forty thousand square feet. Cause right now they can go to four. We're saying on this third of the street, because we wanna encourage it and because, I mean, if you look at the majority of those properties, they're very small. And from the analysis that Todd Poole did, when you can buy two or three twenty thousand or fifteen thousand square foot properties, it's six hundred thousand, I'm making a number. If you're gonna buy eight of them, it's two point one million. So for enable them to be able to afford it, to build what we want them to build and to encourage them, we have to allow them to give that density bonus under the condition, once again, that they do what we want them to build. We don't want three bedroom units, you know, the zoning isn't gonna allow that. The planning and the zoning board, neither one of you would ever, and neither would staff even recommend that.
Godwin?
Hi, Vicente, thank you. Um, my question is, do you buy approximation? How many buildings are we expecting around that area?
Well, that's, that's the, that's a tough question. Because we, we have several developers on the street have already started to assemble some properties, which is, you know. So you could, you could wind up with five buildings, eight buildings, ten buildings.
It's got tied around that area.
Just in that, just in that last third. It's a tough question to answer because, you know, if you have three single family homes and you have a house of worship, which one is gonna sell? If it's twenty thousand square feet, they're, they're gonna be three stories and not even four stories. So how many they're gonna be able to assemble? The idea is to encourage, just like this board made a recommendation three years ago to. to allow some upzoning in the area, and we have five new developments on the street, which in the last two and a half years, which is more development that's happening on the street, in thirty years. So what this board decided to do, and what council took your recommendation, has done tremendous things to the street. Based on the financial analysis and the recommendations from our consultant, and the consensus from staff is, is that we need to provide that little bit more incentive to even make them go a little bit greater, given that the economy's doing well. Most developers now have great, much greater access to funds, and, once again, because, you just look at the map, all the properties are this big. It's, we're not talking about twenty thousand square foot lots where someone can buy. I was talking to a developer on the way to the meeting now, he's got a twenty thousand square foot lot, the guy wants six hundred thousand dollars for twenty thousand square foot.
Hmm.
So, now, it's not, that's not worth it in the market, but the properties are beginning, beginning to be worth more, so when we allow them to go up, it gives them incentive so they can negotiate a little bit better, and it makes their margins better, so that we're able to develop a little bit quicker when we can do the things and redevelop the areas on the street that we wanna do.
Yeah, the que, the second question is, um, based on the fact that, uh, new buildings are coming up, right? Uh, you have the cost of properties around, around that area are gonna be affected.
Yep.
Number one, the rent, and also people who are not developers, they want to, uh, probably buy, uh, new homes to rebuild. Uh, do you, did consult, uh, consult and make any recommendation regarding that, so that you can give a, something like a cushion effect, that will not affect people who are just, uh, planning to rent or to buy new home around that area?
Well, the.
In terms of cost-benefit analysis.
Any, any single-family home that's existing on the street can continue to exist. Their, their grandfathered in, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and they can continue for as long as they wanna continue.
Right.
My expectation is, and as you saw in New Brunswick and every other place, when you have a three or four, five-story building on the left and the right, and you have a twenty thousand, you know, two houses at ten thousand squ- square feet, those houses become very valuable.
Yeah.
And those people who, two years ago, would've sold their house for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I'm making numbers up, their house is now worth four hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna sell that house. And that's, that's really what we're talking about, and that's what economic development and redevelopment is. You make properties more develop, you know, more valuable, you get developers in at the ground level, they make things more valuable, and it's kind of like that little slinky that keeps going down the street, and things get developed, and those single-family homes, they get a windfall.
Yeah, but, uh, the pros is there, and the cons. The cons, one of the cons is that, uh, a lot of people would be, uh, will move out of that area because they couldn't, they won't be able to afford their rent, right? Because based on your own analysis now. Uh, so, I'm just trying to see whether you're gonna regard that as a real advantage of putting up structures.
Well, the, the.
To the neighborhood, uh, to the community.
The people, the people who are renting on those streets.
Right.
Are, aren't the, aren't the owners. The owners are gonna experience the windfall, the people who are renting are gonna rent someplace else, and they may actually rent on the street. Uh, this community, as you know from your affordable housing, and the, the COA plan that was just recently approved by the court, there's probably no municipality in the state that provides greater differing types of, more affordable housing than this community.
Yes, that's a fact.
And just when you regentrify or you redevelop, and you make certain properties more valuable, other properties become more suitable for different types of housing. And once again, there, I, you know, we got sixty-something thousand people, and the, the job that this planning board and the council has done to implement the affordable housing is admirable. I mean, the, the judge said it, yeah, the people who were, everyone said it, we, we are the, we are the prime example of a community that keeps working forward. So I'm not concerned that by allowing those properties become more valuable and providing more housing, that that's gonna do any harm at all to our affordable housing plan, or the ability for people of lesser means to, to live in this community.
So these would be mostly rental, I take it?
Excuse me? Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't plan, right now, there's not been one developer who's come in and said that they wanna build anything that's gonna be, you know, that's gonna be for sale, they're all going to be rental units. And right now, the, the market is extremely hot for, for, whether it's student or the, you know, the studio or the one-bedroom, one-bedroom rentals.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just speak to the, to the issue, the question that was just raised real, real quickly. Um, I had to jump in at the counter, s- asking a similar question, basically, you know, is there, is this gentrification? Um, and, and my opinion was that it really isn't. I mean, this is not a situation like in other towns where you have, um, you know, large apartment buildings with a lot of people in there, where, uh, the rents are really low, they're gonna tear that large apartment building with a bunch of lower modern income folks, and build a luxury apartment complex. That's not the stock of the housing in the Hamilton Street Business District, it's mostly single-family homes.
Yes.
It's one-story commercial buildings. Um, you know, if anything, the, the, the amount of housing that's gonna be available and, and, and the, um, uh, the, the variety of housing is actually only, only gonna be, only gonna increase. Um, I mean, I can't think of a single, there might be some apartments here and there, uh, actually along the street, but I can't think of a single large apartment building housing a lot of people that's going to be replaced as part of this plan.
Let's see, great work by, by your team and everybody else. Two questions, number one is, I mean, there is really no guarantee that you're gonna, they're gonna find, you know, students to rent those one-floor that you are, uh, allocating. Is it necessary to put that limitation?
I, I, I would, I would, I would not be before you this evening making a recommendation that we would allow them to go up another story, unless they were either the student housing, or the one-bedroom, or the studio. If they wanna build one-bedroom and studios, uh, that's, and we have, we're gonna discuss that, we're gonna come back with you for some recommendations. But we, we would not allow them to go up and build two or three-bedroom units. The idea is to get either one, the students, or number two, you know, younger professionals on the street, you know, uh, you know, my wife was a nurse, when she was first graduating, she wasn't married to me. You go or, you know, someone who's working at a, a hospital, they can come and forty, fifty thousand dollars could afford the rent on there, so a one or two bed, you know, one-bedrooms or a studio.
Yeah, that's.
That, that's, that's what would be the provision. We would not allow them to build two and three-bedroom units, cause that's, that's not what we want on this portion of the street, and remember, we're only talking about this one-third of the street right now. We'll come back to you later on in the year when we have some more discussions on the other two-thirds of the street.
Okay, no, I, I agree that one-bedroom is good, but I, I was had a little bit concerned about limiting to the students, but you're saying that the, a couple can rent a one-bedroom?
Well, I, I think, I think, I think what, I think, I think what you have seen on the street right now is that we, we have a, one development that, in, in recon, that was approved by the, the zoning board, the furthest end of the street, uh, is clearly eighty, ninety units of student housing. It's set up that, I, I mean, could me or someone else's single rent, but you're not gonna do it.
Okay.
We have a couple across the street that are marketing to students, but that would be available to that, so, I, I don't see us requiring a deed restriction, but they're gonna be set up, and you're going to be assured, just as this board was in the zoning board, is that what you approved is the one and two-bedroom, you know, the one-bedroom's in the studio or for the, for the students.
Just one follow-up to the discussion that was going on about the value of the property, the houses around that. And I heard you saying that after that whole thing is developed, we're gonna see the prices going up. Is that correct? Is that my understanding?
Well, I mean, I, I, I can't promise you anything, but I can tell you.
But I mean, that's, that's what might happen, right? Most likely happen.
Typically, when you allow from three to four to five, and you put new development in, uh, the area becomes more valuable, the land becomes, and I can tell you, the land is more valuable now than it was two years ago, because the developers are paying more per square footage than they did, you know, by property.
I, I understand that, right.
So I think that, that's, that's just the way the market works.
Okay, so if that is the case, how are we gonna handle the people that they're living right now, and they paying low taxes because their assessed value of their property is low, and come two or three years from now, suddenly they're gonna see their taxes are jumping? And some of these people are low-income families living in that area, and they may not be able to afford.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you, well, there's a couple parts to that, to that thing, there, most of the properties on that street that are single-family homes are rental homes. There are very few that are actually homeowner-occupied, so it's me or you or someone else that owns a property and they're renting them out. So it's, yeah, I, not that there aren't some, but the majority that I know, so it's not like we're gonna be, and, and honestly, if you have someone that has a property that three years ago is now doubled in value, well, we've doubled their value, that enables them to sell their property, make a windfall, and if they want, or they can choose to stay there, or they can take out a reverse mortgage, or there's all different things. We've made their property more valuable, which, honestly, I mean, that's really what we wanna do. Actually, if you.
Okay, let's, okay, let's just go in some order here, so we had Mustafa and then Bob, and then, uh, let's just.
As a matter of fact, I live in that neighborhood, and I live on Martin Street where one of these constructions is on the verge of being constructed, and, and people stop by my house for their concern. And they were, they're very much concerned about the skyline. They're just killing the skyline, you're killing our skyline, that's what they said to me. And their major concern is that they're gonna start forcing them out of their homes very soon with eminent domain and giving it to this big.
Well, that's not gonna, I, let, let me stop you right there.
That's, that's their concern.
There, there, there is no proposal whatsoever for any eminent domain. That, that is no, this board, I'm sure, would never recommend it, staff would recommend it, and I'm sure. I can't speak for council, we have a councilman here, I'm sure his head would turn around if we, and, and he's like, cause he knows that's the case. That we.
They came to my house.
That, that we, we would ever ask for any, the ability to take a piece of property, it's not a redevelopment area. No one has proposed it to be in a redevelopment area. I can't see anyone on this board, or any council member, or any staff member, that would ever support that, I, I don't.
So let's clarify that again, just, just, in order for eminent domain to even be discussed, you have to go through multiple steps. You have to declare the area an area in need of redevelopment, that has not happened here. It is not an area in, in need of redevelopment, there, there needs to be a redevelopment plan. This is not, there is no redevelopment plan, so, there is, the, the, the township has no legal ability to take anybody's property. All this, all this is doing is changing the zoning to allow the private marketplace to develop in a different way. So the only people who are ever going to approach people to buy the property would be the developer, and that person would have the choice whether to sell or not. But no condemnation of eminent domain is, is, is legally possible. And, and as, and as Mr. Dominick said, has, has not been discussed, and we would be extremely surprised if any, if there was any support for it.
That's true, cause my property value is going up too, that's, that's, that is a goo, that's a good part about it.
Um, and I'm happy for you, my friend, that's a good thing.
So that's the issue, that's how.
Cause my house was underwater. You know, it's going up back.
Um, I'm certainly willing to have a, a proposal drawn up, uh, but I also have some, some reservations, uh, and some of them have to do with the increase in property value. Now, some properties will not become, uh, that much more valuable, because there'll be no properties that they can be combined with. So, they, they will be sort of odd ducks there, so not everybody will necessarily benefit. I think the other concern, though, with the increase in property values, is that you could wind up actually, and I understand what is being said about this, it's not a great area for, where people wanna put stores, and we have new stores that are available, and, uh, they're still empty. But, uh, I wonder if we might not lose some of the stores that we already have, such as Lorraine's Department Store and, and some of the others, because suddenly, rather than, uh, being, uh, a commercial property, they're more valuable as a residential entity, so that you could actually wind up diminishing the amount of commercial activity in this section of Hamilton Street.
And, and the important thing that you mentioned at the end is this section of Hamilton Street. Because the, the ultimate plan, and I think you've read the ultimate plan, is that this is just a third of Hamilton Street. The idea is to concentrate more of the housing on this side of the street, and in the middle section, to make it more valuable and more feasible to put the commercial. So, when you, once you have more people on the street and more foot traffic, it makes the commercial entities, whether they're in that area or the adjacent areas, makes those more valuable, and also makes it more likely that those businesses are gonna do well. So, that very well may happen. You may have a prop, you may have something on this part of the street, and they may say, well, I'm, I own this, I can sell it for eight hundred thousand dollars, and I'm gonna move four blocks down, because that's where the commercial hub is gonna be, versus there being, and, and, and listen, hindsight is twenty-twenty. When this whole district was changed to HBD, and we allowed to do everything on the whole street, from a planning perspective, that's not really a good idea, because that, that puts a hodgepodge all over the place. What you wanna do is have little nodules, I said, hindsight's twenty-twenty. We could say now that they shouldn't have done it, but we weren't here twenty, thirty years ago when it was done. It would, maybe that's what needed to be done at that particular time. The idea, and what you do at planning now, would you say you wanna encourage something here, here, and here? To say you wanna have a mile-long Main Street is not feasible, there's no place that I know in the entire country that has a mile-long Main Street, it just, you don't have that. So the idea is to have, to start with here, to make it much more adaptable, much more feasible, much more affordable, to be able to build and have that foot traffic, and then, in the latter part of the year, we'll be talking about. We may have other recommendations to do the other two-thirds of the street, we may not. We may be talking about some other amenities, we may recommend, we may not. But the idea is to start with this portion of the street, because it's the easiest one, and it's the one that are, when Todd Poole came and did it, that's very specific recommendation he made, and given the feedback and the amount of meetings I've had in the last couple months from developers, that's the part of the street that they're interested in, and we'd like to move forward with being able to do that, to make it easier for them to develop in accordance with the zoning.
Okay, uh, just one other question, only because I don't have a piece of paper in front of me, which you know I really like. Uh, and I cannot see that map very well from here, in terms of being able to read the street names. Now, my remembrance is the Key Avenue.
This is Key, Miller.
Okay.
Dunham, Highland Home, and the other side, Brooklyn, Home, Ambrose, Meister, Kosuth, uh, Henry and Sidney's across from there.
Okay, so, uh, that answered my question, I wondered, cause Key then is just towards New Brunswick from what used to be, believe it or not, an A&amp;P Shopping Center, and even in my lifetime, a farm with horses. Uh, but, uh.
Yeah, you stopped dating yourself there, my friend.
There's a historian, historian.
Doctor Greg.
What a memory, I'll tell ya.
But, so it's just, it's just towards New Brunswick from that shop, shopping center.
Just, just, just that, and that's the important thing, we're only talking about that third of the street right now.
And, and, and the shopping center's not included.
Correct.
Okay.
So, you know, what I'd suggest is, you know, sounds like there's mostly positive reaction, you know, draw something up. As you know, that, that way, we'll all have, not just Bob, a piece of paper in front of us, and, um, you know, we'll see where things go, um, and like you said, maybe bring it, at the same time, we can kinda deal with the M1 and the, the M2 and that whatever.
We'll, we'll do it all at once. And that, you know, like, that's how we typically do it, we, I, we wanted to buy in on the concept, because we, we, you've always made, to, and when Ted was chairman, you didn't want us to throw an ordinance in front of you before you had an idea to discuss the concept, but that's not fair to you.
Right, and no, I feel, so I think this, for that reason, this has been good, and, and you know, the other thing is, I, I generally, um, you know, in, in the time you've been zoning officer and now Economic Development Director, these things. these things generally don't arise out of thin air. It arises because people have expressed interest in doing something, and, and the zoning is not allowing it. So, um, you know, we're, we're reacting to the market, and we could ignore it and say, well, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it the way it is, or, or whatever, and, and miss out on some opportunities, or we'll, we'll answer that.
We'll do that. We'll prepare for you in the coming months, and we'll come back, and we'll have a further discussion then.
Sounds good.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I forgot Ted, very bad.
I'm trying to, we have multiple people, uh, trying, uh, trying two, two, two bites at the apple, and then.
Well, two thoughts I have. Uh, one is that what students would really like is a two-bedroom apartment with a rather large common area and bunk beds in the, the small bedrooms, so that four students can live there particularly affordably, because students are typically looking for the lowest possible rent. Uh, I don't know whether there's a way that you can build this into the plan. The other thought I have, and this is a little more restrictive than you were suggesting, is to say five stories, if the first story is commercial, four stories if it's all residential. Because after all, uh, we, the township, would like to increase the value of the property, that's, as you, as you said. And if you can get a building that has one level, one floor of commercial, and then four stories of residential above it, that's, uh, valuable. Uh, I don't know, you may say it's not more valuable than five stories of residential. But one consideration is security on the first floor of a residential building.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you. Your, 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 your first comment will be, will be brought in where, for instance, recon is, they're like fourplexes or threeplexes. It's set up so that you can have four in the same room. When it's, once it's set up like that, and it's pretty clear, when you see a floor plan, you know that, uh, it's not a dorm. You know, my son is, I just visited him for five days in Florida, and he's actually in a five-plex. They all have their own private bathrooms, and a little twelve-by-twelve room and a common area. You know, when you look at that setup, that it's a four-plex, whether it's, and typically now, it's, whether it's, there may be two-in-one room and one a separate, it's clear what it is. So that's taken care of. The issue you're talking about, the rental value of the per-square-foot value on Hamilton Street is incredibly low. The, the assessed value for an apartment per square foot versus the square foot of retail is much greater. What we want to do on this street is, we want to have a very successful retail business portion, but we want it to be closer to the middle and not to this one-third. And once again, what I talked about before is that we want this to be a, it's not really a Main Street, but there is no Main Street in the United States, and I'm, I'm aware of that's a mile long. Normally, there are two, three, four blocks. What we wanna do is, we wanna have this portion of the street be more of the residential look, and then the middle, and it may be perhaps the, the, the second third, have more of the commercial. So I would not recommend that we, we mandate that they have any commercial. In fact, I would say we would encourage them not to, because they're not gonna build it. I mean, they may build a small office, or if they, if one of them, you know, has a tenant that they've been dealing with, cause they're a big developer, they may build that little small portion on that, but the majority of them are gonna build the residential.
You know, gone wanting. Uh, it surprises me, you know, some of the stuff that's been built on Churchill by RPM, where we mandated all that, has had a tough time. Uh, and I'm looking at the Seven-Eleven, I was in there the other day.
I, I, I can tell you the Seven-Eleven.
It's only the Seven-Eleven right now. I'm surprised at that.
The two, the, the three recon on the two-later street that Dean Addy have done are having a extremely hard time. I talked to both the developers in the last week, and they get the same thing. They get hair cutters, they get, you know, a little bordego or something like that. They're not getting anything else, because there's not the people on the street yet. And all those things, and it's such a long road, that if they can get a rent at half the price, two blocks up, why would you locate there? When the people can walk. I mean, that, that's just economics one-on-one, they're not gonna do that.
Subway's nail salons and center that you need, really.
But, but, but the idea is that once you have X amount of people, or five times X, that those, those, and people are, like to walk, they're gonna walk a block to get whatever they're gonna get, and that's gonna make it much more easier to rent those properties and make those, those properties more valuable.
You know, as far as security on a ground floor, I mean, obviously, you, you go to New York, right? There's people who live in basement apartments, right? They're not, they're not getting people slithering in there night and day, right? So there's, there's gotta be a way, right, through placement of the windows or
Ted's concerned, Ted's concern is legitimate. There is a concern, but I can tell you that when you go to New Brunswick, and they, and there are first-floor apartments, and the developer's developing, and he has them there, I mean, and when they come to this board, you're, or the zoning board, you're gonna ask him that question. And you're gonna make sure that you, you feel comfortable in how they're being designed. It's a legitimate question.
I'm sure there's some sort of engineering though that can take care of that, right? And that has in the past. I mean, if you look at the building on the corner of Franklin Boulevard in Hamilton, the one that was knocked down and rebuilt, that has residential on the ground floor, doesn't it?
Yes.
The other thing I would like to see, which building have adequate laundry facility? Fire those students to have to go.
Yeah, and, and I, I believe recon, I, I think recon has those, doesn't it?
I, I, I don't recall, but, but I think one of the things that we will be looking at is, is requiring that they have certain amenities that are geared towards that population. So, you know, laundry facilities, you know, bike parking, you know, things that are geared to that population, and, and require them to incorporate those things. And we'll look at what other, what other towns, what some cities have done to encourage this type of development, see what they've required as well, and, you know, incorporate.
And we're, and we're gonna come back to you with this, and then we can have this discussion even further, and you can go and say, well, we need to do this, and we need to do this. The purpose for tonight was to make sure that conceptually, you were okay with it, just like you were with the C B M one, because we didn't wanna prepare an ordinance and you smack us across the head, or Mike called me up before the meeting and say, what the hell are you doing, Vince? So.
Mike, just one comment I, I wanted to add, uh, just follow up to the, this, uh, laundry stuff. Usually when those are available, they charge a little bit more. And so students, again, recognizing that they're not gonna have a lot of money, they may not want it, and if they need to walk, it may not be a bad idea, because you will have a laundry mat here on the corner, which they will buy, and they will socialize.
Well, he, here's, here's the way I look at it, Alex. I mean, there's too much in New Brunswick, and there's too much in the surrounding community for a developer to come in here and build something that's not either equal or superior to what's on the market, and, and, and make it work. So my guess is that, that'll just happen organically.
We'll come to you in the next couple of months, and we'll have both of those ordinance that you can take a look at. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Twice in two months.
With the promise of more, no doubt. Okay, so I have nothing else. When's our next meeting? Christine, roughly speaking? March seventh? Okay. Gotta speak into that microphone, we can't pick you up.
March seventh.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Done we are.